Well, Lord, can I complete the statutory histories?
Yeah.
You've seen the whole picture.
Yeah.
So going to the other clip.
Yep.
The second of Local Government Act nineteen thirty-two, full print. This is from current law statutes. And the only reason for the first two pages is your lordship's look at the second page, at the end of two, the text of two three three.
Mm-hmm.
As the section is drawn from section two eight seven of the Local Government Act nineteen thirty-three, as amended by the London Government Act nineteen sixty-three, and being recast. So then you've got the material that goes back to nineteen thirty-three. No idea whether it goes back any further. Two eight, if you go to the next page, the third page of the clip. Two eight seven, which is said to be the source of the nineteen thirty-three act, the public notice provision. Actually, no equivalent of two three three, as in the original text of the nineteen thirty-three act. And then if you go on through the clip, we've got a reference to section eight of the London Government Act nineteen sixty-three. Section eight, page six three four.
Yes.
And then over the page that the provision, the actual text on what was inserted after two eight. After two eight seven, we have two eight seven large A is inserted, last two pages of the clip.
Yes.
You need to be slightly careful about how to read this, because it opens with the words, "Any document to which this section applies." Then there's a list of recipients. "Section applies to the..."
It's pub, sorry, go on.
Subsection five. Now, actually, to get the scope of two eight seven A, which is the four, I don't know, of two three three. You need to go to subsection five, which is eight seven A.
So that is... Okay. So the beginning, the first four lines, are they of subsection five, are the same as two three three?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah. Other than not being, because that's dealt with somewhere else.
My point is no more sophisticated than that the whole thing comes from a series of provisions dealing with public notices, service of notices on local authorities, and services of notices by local authorities. Not with statutory schemes, dealing with contractual notices or anything resembling party war notices or any of that sort.
But it's interesting that two eight seven A is not subsidiary to, although it's gone in there, is not subsidiary to two eight seven.
No.
In a sense, it's not confined to public notices. It says any...
Oh, absolutely no, that's not my case. And the footnote into the current law statutes that I started out on this paper chase.
Yeah.
I think slightly misstates the position, to be honest.
Yeah, yes, I think it does.
But it's not my point, it's subservient to it at all. It's just that it's in a clutch of provisions, having that effect. So you've got a clutch of provisions, service of notices on local authorities, public notices generally, service of notices by local authorities. And it's in that context, one has to approach the critical wording of what is now two three three.
Well, it's two, two eight seven two. "Any document to which this section applies being a document required to be authorised to be served on the owner or occupier of premises may be addressed." Two, is it, the missing page?
Yes.
We're missing a page or not.
The section, the note says that the section's been recast, and it's frankly a bit confusing, because you start out with a list of the recipients.
Yeah.
And the places where they might be served. But the scope of the section is in subsection five.
So is there anything from either the, is there anything from the history which really helps us?
There is nothing in the sense of a form of words which you can construe in order to see.
Or its place in the scheme, or anything, really.
I haven't.
I mean, these are very, the subsection five is very broad wording. So there's nothing you've been able to find which might explain why this very broad wording was inserted into the nineteen thirty-three. This very broad provision was inserted into the nineteen thirty-three.
I haven't found anything. I don't pretend to have done completely exhaustive work.
No, no.
I thought we should try.
Yeah.
I thought it really important that your lordship saw part eleven of the present statute, and where it comes from. And I can make the same point, and do make the same point about those. But when I, if I now go back, against that background, go back to two three three, your lordship's just put to me the opposition that two three three is very broad wording, but it obviously is in a way. But if we go back to it, I have made and repeated submission that you're on construes the whole phrase. So we're looking for a notice required or authorised under an enactment to be served by a local authority. So it's got to be the local, what you're looking for is a notice by a local authority that's required by an enactment. And I can do no better than, it must be in its capacity as local authority, not as somebody, as a body who happens to be a local authority exercising different powers.
Do we gain anything in your submission from subsection seven, which says that if the name or address of any owner, lessie or occupier of land, et cetera, is to be given, and I appreciate that it then deals with circumstances with which we're not concerned. But it might be said that it at least contemplates that the local authority will be serving notice upon a lessie of land?
Oh, yes, it will, a local authority, as local authority certainly may well be serving a lessie. Take the classic planning case of an enforcement notice, somebody, somebody of it, carries on some unlawful development, for example. I mean, there's a whole...
But would you, would the local authority be serving on that person qua lessie?
Yes, you'll be looking at the owner. There's a provision in the planning scheme, one of the people who you can enforce against, just quotes the owner. And you would then have to identify who the owner was. There were some other hard cases about service of notices on people who don't ever get to know the existence of the notice until a six-week period for appeal has passed. But I mean, yeah, lessie would certainly have a, well, I mean, I know planning and I know rating, actually. I mean, the lessie would be a ratable owner, I think is the phrase, but certainly subject to rates in some circumstances. And I think one of the cases is about...
Well, to be sure, they would be being enforced against in your scenarios, either because there's a rates liability or because there's planning enforcement. But... The question I'm asking you is, is what relevance that would have so far as subsection seven is concerned, which specifically envisages a document being served on a lessie of land?
Yes, well, I repeat, simply in, I mean, if in a planning case, it was known or thought that an unlawful development had been carried out on land by the lessie, but you didn't know where the lessie was, then that would fit very precisely into two three three seven.
Okay.
So one, my submission, I think, is I don't think two three three seven helps at all, because the range of situations where, on my case, a local authority acting as such will be concerned with the exercise of plus eight planning or rating powers will accompany all the classes of individuals identified in the first line of subsection seven. Potentially identify them.
I was trying to think of a sort of family law context, my background. So all I discovered over lunch was the Education Act nineteen ninety-six, section four three seven, which gives a local authority power to serve school attendance notice, essentially. So if it appears to a local authority that a child at compulsory school age is not receiving suitable education, they shall serve a notice in writing on the parent, et cetera.
Yes.
So is that...
My first reaction to that, without knowing it.
And I don't know whether it has any provisions elsewhere, because there were so many sections I didn't have done to...
No, no, my reaction to that is that the local education authority will be like a local, in my head, like a local planning authority. I mean, that is, it will have enforcement powers and...
So that you'd say is acting as a local authority?
If it will be a notice authorised under the enactment to be served by a local authority, you know, what your lordship tells me, the wording says that. But I mean, that's, that's important, but not the most important thing.
Can I, can I ask you a question about the statutory provision that's referred to in Rushmore, the Rushmore and Reynolds case?
Yeah. Yes.
If you've got that, it's sent out on the first page of the report.
Got there.
You'll see section sixteen of the Local Government Miscellaneous Provisions Act, where with a view to performing a function conferred on a local authority by any enactment, the authority considers that it ought to have information connected with the land. The authority may serve a notice requiring the recipient to furnish the authority the nature of the interest it's on. And we see then that section two three three is considered in that context. Now, to get into this, you have to be doing it with a view to performing a function. Can a local authority serve a notice if it thinks it's going to help it with its housing functions, such as Mr Manning took his two this morning?
I don't know for sure, but I anticipate the answer is yes. And I would, my submission on my case will be that this is a power given to a local authority as a local authority to require information.
Yeah.
In connection with a function conferred by an enactment, doesn't follow that carrying out a function. It is caught by the wording of two three three. But it's a specific information-seeking power which a private individual just wouldn't have.
So to that extent, your public-private type dichotomy doesn't exclude things to do with housing. Things to do with, that a local authority is doing in relation to housing can be on the public side of the line.
But it could be. No, I mean, before I was just about to come to.
Yes, sorry, yes.
I mean, I don't claim it solves the problem, but my submission, and central part of my case, I think, is that you're looking for a situation in which the identity as a local authority is crucial to the role in this case. Is the identity crucial, as a local authority, crucial to the role of serving the notice of termination? The answer to that is no. At least because it's a matter of fact, we know there are other bodies that satisfy the landlord condition. But also, more fundamentally, because the nature of the relationship between the local authority and the tenant better characterise the relationship between the landlord, between a landlord and the tenant. Whereas your information-seeking power in Rushmore is, as I understand it, I mean, it's, you know, our fate understanding, if I can put it that way. But you're looking for somebody who has got specific powers as a custodian of the public interest to seek the information.
Yeah.
Before, let's hand up. One of the cases, as I said before lunch, remember a case is referred to in Westlaw, it's tidy, and they don't really help all that much, is one that you should, I think, know about more in connection with the second part of the argument.
Can I ask a very broad question?
Yes.
What do you see as the problem with twenty three three applying generally? Sorry, two three three.
Well...
I mean, it has, it, in other words, what's the problem with the service provisions in subparagraph two applying in respect of any notice order or other document?
Because you have a statute, the statutory scheme into which, on that scenario, two three three is being inserted.
Yes.
Will have been drafted in its own terms, with all sorts of assumptions about the need for service, the need for knowledge, actual receipt of the document or otherwise. That will all have been addressed in the context, as all these cases show, in the context of the primary statutory scheme. And so that if you then graft on two three three, if it's two three three.
Yes.
You graft on a set of provisions favourable to the local authority, which have not been considered by Parliament as part of the formulation of the original scheme. And so that, I mean, on our case, it's obviously, we say, a real vice of the problem, of the situation that is created by the two three three. And if my learned friend is right on the second part of the argument, the tenant never needs to know about the actual receipt about the notice, and will therefore lose his power of review, which is a pretty crucial matter. Parliament have considered that flat on in the construction of the notice provision in the eighty-five act, that would be one thing. But to do it by grafting into two three three, if two three three wasn't intended to be part of the statutory scheme, then in my submission, you do have a problem. And you do have quite a big problem, as the facts of, the facts of my case on the view of the district judge at least demonstrate. So, I mean, two three three is on, let's face it, construction at least, a wide provision about circumstances in which service is to, is to be regarded as having occurred.
If there aren't specific provisions in a statute as to how service is to be affected, then you're saying the common law rules apply? So by giving a local authority the right to serve under two three three, you are removing, to the extent that you are, I know there's a debate about that, what rights or powers you might have, what, I don't know, what... But anyway.
What is an appropriate regime for service?
Yeah.
If the primary...
So it's based on there being differences in their effect? In other words, the common law rules and two three three?
Yes, but as this case demonstrates, that's...
And really, I suppose, that has to be based on a submission that Parliament must have intended in all the other, because, I mean, there must be hundreds of ways in which a local authority might be required by an enactment to give or serve a notice. The Parliament, you're saying, must have intended in all of those, absent any specific provisions within the act, and absent them being acting as local authority to serve in accordance with the common law rules?
Yes. If you go back to the drafting assumptions, parliamentary council will have drafted the scheme. On the day, may have asked the rhetorical question, "Do you want specific permissions about service?" Got back an answer, "No." Sometimes because it was too difficult, but usually because they didn't want to start devising a whole statutory scheme. But what all the material demonstrates is they weren't getting back an answer, they didn't bother about that, because we've got two three three.
Do I understand that it follows from that submission that on your case, service by post wouldn't be good enough?
I need to go back to two three three.
Because in your case, two three three doesn't, can't be reused, and therefore...
I see, sorry, not good enough in that sense.
As I understand it, because service by post isn't authorised by the nineteen eighty-five act, you would say service by post is not good enough?
I think I would need to think about the Interpretation Act.
Well, see, section seven says, "Where an act authorises or requires any document to be served by post." And section eighty-three ZA of the Housing Act nineteen eighty-five, which, if we focus on that, which is our provision, that doesn't authorise or require a notice to be served by post.
No.
So it would necessarily follow...
We're looking only at part of the Interpretation Act, and there's case law, I mean, seven is dealing with timing. It's a presumption about timing, I think your lordship said. Now, there may be more general provisions which do authorise service by post. I don't know the answer to that.
Well, see, seven is not just about timing, it has two limbs to it. Firstly, it says service is deemed to be affected by properly addressing prepaying and posting the letter. So if you do those three things, then service is deemed to be affected. And then the timing is the time at which the letter would be delivered in the ordinary course of post. And both of those limbs are, in the first case, unless a contrary intention appears from the act. In the second case, unless the contrary is proved. So there are get-outs on both limbs. But I think it follows from your submission that if you're right about section two three three, you can't serve notice under section eighty-three ZA by post, even if you properly address it and you prepay it, you post it.
It certainly will follow from my submission, if that's, if we're correct. I will think about that, if I think of an answer, I'll, your lordship, know. To answer the primary question about why it matters, I would still very firmly maintain that the grasp of the law, section eighty, of ZA, will have assumed that whatever regime was available for services of notice under section eighty-three, not necessarily ZA.
I can understand the submission that when you look at what the notice is required to obtain.
Yes.
I can understand the submission that the natural implication of that is that actual notice to the recipient is required, and therefore nothing less than actual receipt by the recipient will suffice. I can understand why you would say that that is implicit in the requirements. But that would seem to have the surprising conclusion, when taken together with your submission on section two three three, that post is not good enough, because of course, post is not guaranteed to bring a notice home to the recipient.
The first submission which your lordship summarises, which I'm going to come to shortly, fairly shortly, in both senses, certainly assumes, is correct on the basis that we will be submitting that if there isn't actual notice of the content, if the notice doesn't actually come to the notice of the recipient, then it hasn't in the end been served. But that may be a question about presumptions about whether you presume that something that's been stuck in the post has been served, even absent section seven of the Interpretation Act. The tenant comes up and says, "I never got it." Then he's got a problem.
To be sure, I quite understand that there's a difference between something that's irrebuttably presumed and something that's rebuttably presumed. There's a big difference there, yes.
Yes, so you have, just assuming, and I will, I'll have to go and check it out in our shout at some point, as the world gives judgment, that if there is something more I could be saying, assuming the statute is simply silent, you have a situation where an officer of the local authority deposes to the fact that he has put the notice in the post, then I would anticipate that the court would accept that as evidence of service, unless the tenant says, "I never got it," ignoring Interpretation Act, which creates a particular presumption.
But how does that work? I mean, on your submission, what's the basis for saying that service by post is adequate? Leave aside the question of whether it's rebuttable or irrebuttable, let's assume for the moment that it's rebuttable. But why would service by post be adequate?
My answer, why wouldn't it? Assuming that the primary facing case...
Well, is it not implicit in your submission, the local authority can't serve except in the way that is authorised by statutes?
Well, yes, but there are quite important provides to that, implicitly or explicitly by statutes.
So you say it's implicit in section eighty-three ZA that service by post is adequate?
Well, it may be, I mean, I, we haven't drawn up the countries on that. But there will be a whole range of situations, I mean, it's the same as a contractual provision. A contractual provision that requires service, I anticipate will normally be done by post.
This is not a point of real general application, but the facts of this case don't encourage the conclusion that you can prove service by sending it to the post, because here, the document was handed to somebody on the premises. And yes, in circumstances where the tenant denied receiving it, the district judge said that there was no real prospect of the local authority being able to prove that the tenant did receive it. So if the local authority had merely put it in the post, and Mr Bravington had denied receiving it, presumably by the same token, the district judge would have said there's no real prospect of the local authority being able to prove service?
Yes. Either the statutory scheme of the eighty-five act as drafted deals with that possibility, or it doesn't. What you can't do is jam in two three three in a way which wouldn't have been recognised by parliamentary authorities responsible for the progress of the bill. There's no parliamentary consideration of whether that's an appropriate method of dealing with it at all, that's the fundamental submission. And my inability to nicely answer the question is reflection on me, but not the basic underlying submission. is reflection on me, but not the basic underlying submission. Yes. The Lordship has passed me a note, which I think is relevant to bear in mind, assuming that the local authority absent two, three, three can't demonstrate under the nineteen eighty-five Act, that service by post is good enough. And presumably the same applies to service by housing associations, whether it's under the old regime when they were secure tenants, sorry, they satisfied the landlord condition, or alternatively, under the present regime when they were assured tenancies. No provision that anyone's gone to demonstrate service by post, two, three, three would axiomatically not be available. So the local authority has not been put in a more difficult position by the absence of two, three, three, it has been getting the advantage, which hasn't been considered, we say, as part of the relevant statute scheme. At the time, either the eighty-eight Act scheme or the eighty-five Act scheme is drawn up.
I think Mr Royson is trying to attract your attention.
I think for once I've got it already. Yeah, I mean, the case is, we say that what's happening here is that the local authority has been conferred an advantage not available to anyone else, any two, three, three. If you take two, three away, three, three away from local authority, you've still got a scheme that presumably works in relation to housing associations and anybody else who satisfies the landlord condition or is the landlord of a short tenancy.
You handed up this authority...
I actually managed to hand it up.
You did?
Yeah, I saw that. This is the nearest to an authority that my Westlaw researchers came up with that actually dealt with two, three, one. It says something quite interesting in relation to the second part of the case. What, basically, what happened was that an agent in a planning case was instructed very late to draw up and serve a reserve matters scheme. Planning permission had a time limit on when the submission of reserve, or approval of reserve matters had to be submitted. It was right up against the end of the time limit. So we're dealing with material which I say, on my own case, is classic two, three, one territory. Service of a notice on a local authority. And what actually happened was that he decided it was no point in putting it through the letterbox on the Sunday, because there'd be no one there to read it, even if it went through the letterbox. So he actually served it on the office when people were there and picked it up on the Monday. The local authority said, you're late, you should have put it through the letterbox on the Sunday. And the court said that's all very unattractive. And the holding, which we'll see halfway down the headnote, held a lay of the application that lodged in article seven-one of the Town and Country Planning General Development Order and leaving physical, meant more than a mere leave physical deposit at the premises of the local authority, involved depositing of the relevant documents with some responsible officer or employee. Which in the present case, that could not have been done, that could not have been done, between the time when the offices had closed on Friday, the time when they reopened on Monday, if the person chose an alternative of leaving that was authorised an alternative for posting, as he was entitled to do, he could not be penalised with regard in default if he left the documents on the next following day that the offices of the authority were open. And the holding on the Monday was good enough. If it wasn't good enough, it was definitely, so I don't think I need to go into the rest of the detail, that's the closest to the consideration of some of the actual effects of two, three, one that I've discovered. An important background point is that it's in my classic territory of planning, which is a statutory function of the local authority. Can I just then deal, mainly points from the skeleton, which I know I need to do very quickly, make some submissions about whoever the fact that secure landlords are normally, local authorities is legally irrelevant at twenty-seven to twenty-nine of the skeleton, page forty-one of the bundle? I think those submissions are probably made already.
Yes.
Except, I can just repeat the submission behind paragraph twenty-nine. If my earlier friend's approach is to be defended, he has to draw up some test that distinguishes the situations that I say is covered, and the situation that he says arises under section eighty-five, from, for example, the party wall example, or the bankruptcy notice example. What is the test? And then I do want to make formally the submission about thirty-seven to thirty-eight.
Before you go, have you taken us through Enfield? I don't think you have.
Have you?
I don't think. Were you going to take us through Enfield?
I would like, I need to, yes, I need, I don't need to do more than go to the passage in Lord Justice Kennedy's judgment.
Right.
But I do need, I don't know, tell me to do that. Passage is at page six, nine, eight, the report one, five, three of the Authorities' Bundle. And the argument, it is correct, the argument being dismissed is a very wide one made by Mr Maguire, which is that all the functions on behalf of a local authority, the statutory, because it's the statutory body, and therefore, all notices that weren't specifically authorised were empowered by section one, one, one.
Yes.
And therefore, statutory notices. Now, then, Miss Law Justice Kennedy says, my judgment in section two, three, three cannot assist the counsel in this case because the notice was not required or authorised to be given by our enactment, it was required to be given of common law. Now, pausing there, that's true, but it doesn't follow that the reasoning of the remainder of the paragraph doesn't apply to our situation. With respect to Lord Justice Kennedy, suffers from the vice that even our skeleton does from that of trying and dissecting the whole phrase in two, three, three, and separating out the requirement that is done by our enacting enactment, from the requirement that is done by our on behalf of a local authority, before that words, you need the whole phrase, and Lord Kennedy doesn't deal with the whole phrase, Lord Justice Kennedy doesn't deal with that phrase, I accept that. But I do submit that when he goes on about six lines into the passage, many statutes and statutory instruments do specifically require or authorise a local authority or one of its officers to give some form of notice. And in my judgment, section three, two, three, three is intended to assist local authorities to give notice in such cases, but not to relieve a local authority obligations which fall on every other landlord, including, for example, a housing association. And then there's the reference to placing local authorities in an advantageous position. Now, my submission is reference to many statutes and statutory instruments do specifically require authorise a local authority to give some form of notice, is precisely, in fact, covering the sort of situation that I say is covered by two, three, three. The liability order, the enforcement notice, maybe the information request in the Education Act that your Lordship was putting to me immediately after lunch. So there in it. And then he illustrates that by saying not to relieve a local authority's obligations which fall on every other landlord, including, for example, a housing association. Now, and as you ought to have seen from our skeleton, we do say that those words actually decide the present case, but even if they don't, they're targeted very closely at the present case. Because if you imagine the form of the nineteen eighty-five Act as it stood before the advent of the eighty-eight Act, you had a requirement for notice, not a Z A notice, but a notice, you had a wide range of bodies that satisfied the landlord condition, including housing associations. And so, applying the approach of your Justice Kennedy, bringing two, three, three into the equation does precisely what we've been discussing since lunch, that is insert into the statutory regime a provision which was not considered as an integral part of it when it was elected, and it confers an advantage not available to housing associations at the time the statute was passed. So we do say that either, as we do in the skeleton, the passage is decisive, when you actually see it in that light, what's the reasoning? The reasoning is to only apply to where a local authority is acting, qua local authority. Alternatively, if it's ever to, it's persuasive. I don't know that I can help any more on Enfield, that is the way in which we... Thank you. I think I've got just dealing with paragraphs thirty-seven and thirty-eight of the skeleton, paragraphs forty-three and forty-four. Page forty-three, forty-four. Now, obviously, the authority that I handed in today is an illustration. Even assuming, compared to the submissions we make up to paragraph seventy-six, that two, three, three properly understood creates an irrebuttable presumption, we submit that on the facts of this case, handing the notice to my client's girlfriend is not a service within section two, three, three for the reasons we set out at paragraph thirty-seven. Any more than putting it through a letterbox when there's no one there, as you see, there's the service on the day in which it went through the letterbox. So see, this is actually an example which I don't think we had in mind when we started thirty-eight, but it is an example of thirty-eight. And the district judge, my final preference, basically accepted that submission. And there are a string of paragraphs which I ask the court to read whenever is an appropriate moment, from paragraph twenty-two through to twenty-eight. Page ninety-seven of the bundle.
Yes.
And the judge summarises in our submission accurately, the common law position is that service on a served party is not sufficient. Historically, the position has been that service on only a wife or servant may be adequate, as observed in the headnote, in the Atlee case. Going together the various points, please note that first of all, giving a notice is mandatory. Secondly, the claimant has not pleaded reliance on the terms of the tenancy agreement in relation to services of notice. Thirdly, the claimant's evidence is that a notice was given to a served party who happened to be at the defendant's property in circumstances where the claimant was a sole tenant. And there is no evidence which persuasively contradicts the defendant's evidence that he was not until aware of the notice until after the claim is issued. Pausing there, timing is important. Judge, in order to avoid the conclusion that she reached, would have been, have to be satisfied that it was appropriate to hold that the notice would have come to my client's notice in the seven-day window. Initiation of the review proceedings.
Yes.
You could have read the rest of the paragraph, but we say that by the district judge is correct, for all those reasons, we ask your Lordship if we do get to that stage, to uphold the arguments in the correspondence method.
Can I just go back to this question of the, if section two, three, three applies?
Yeah.
The, your submission as to whether it's necessary to, well, what sort of, whether it creates an irrebuttable presumption? Or whether it's necessary to prove receipt, or whether it creates a rebuttable presumption? And just where exactly, what's your submission on that?
My primary submission is that even if two, three, three applies, you, there's nothing in two, three, three that authorises service on a served party present at the premises.
Don't worry, I understand that, but from the point of view of looking at it more generally, do you say absent that, it does create, if you serve in accordance with the provisions, do you say that creates an irrebuttable presumption? Or you just say you don't have to argue that in this case?
Contrary to divisional court authority in the case which we handed in, but, I mean, I do push on the shelves a bit that is wrong for the reasons we have set out in the skeleton.
Right.
The primary rule, we don't deal with it, because we weren't, we hadn't found it, it was our fault. But we do ask the court to grapple with the position of whether there is, in truth, given the strength of the common law presumption, that knowledge is a fundamental requirement of service, is an irrebuttable presumption, created on the basis explained by Lord Justice Watkins in Rushmore, which is Rushmore.
And what do you say about Newborough? Which is the other new case we were given this morning, which deals with the notice going under the line, or said to have gone under the line, and that... So I don't know whether there was a finding of fact as to whether that was what was being contended.
I think it does proceed on the basis that's what happened.
Yeah, I think, I think it does. And it was said that didn't matter.
We say, except, I think I would say, and I would have just said, that in accordance with our basic submission on the need, the need for actual knowledge, if necessary, justifying why the presumption was rebuttable. That your lordship should not follow the reasoning of Lord Justice Watkins as it applies to G C three. And as we explored in the argument before lunchtime, that section seven isn't strictly in play, and it's been claimed in aid by Lord Justice Watkins by way of analogy. What is in play is two C three.
Yes.
And as we say in the skeleton, there's nothing in two three three that talks about an irrebuttable presumption, so one just applies the language of two three three, red in the light of the common law.
Can I just try breaking it down a moment? Suppose for a moment that section two three three applies.
Yeah.
Then that authorizes service by leaving at the proper address. And you don't submit, as I understand it, that you cannot satisfy that requirement by giving it to somebody in the proper address. So suppose I go to the door, knock on the door, the wife opens, say, and you give the document to the wife, then you have left it at the proper address on your case?
There's a very outdated quirk about the status of wife. If, also, it's a slightly different question, if what you do is give it to someone who is not an officer, or a servant, or a wife, then, as we say in the, if it's a final paragraph of the skeleton, or an ultimate paragraph of the skeleton, that is not leaving it at the property.
At that stage, you're saying it's not common law service, are you? Or are you saying?
It's not service under two three three, it's not within the concept of leaving it at the property. And it's not saved by the common law, of course.
So is it your case that if you knock on the door and you give the document to somebody inside, that cannot constitute leaving at the property, albeit that it might constitute common law service?
If it constitutes common law service.
And we don't have to worry about two three three.
No, no, but it's the because that's important. Because the individual is plainly authorized to receive it, then I think it would be hard not to argue that was leaving it at the property. If that's not the case, so you simply give it to somebody, some third party, then we do say that is not leaving it at the property, and therefore isn't called, isn't authorized by two three three.
And can I just try seeing how that fits with Newborough? So in Newborough, Lord Justice Russell says, it has to be left in a manner which a reasonable person minded to bring the document to the attention of the person to whom the notice is addressed would adopt. So I knock on the door, somebody opens the door, I say, here's this letter. Suppose it's not a wife, but it's a longstanding partner. Have you then adopted a manner which a reasonable person minded to bring the document to the attention of the person would adopt?
Well, I don't think I can go further than to make the submission that we made in the skeleton.
Yep.
I think that's as much off as I can.
Thank you, my lord. Thank you. Yes, Miss Mann.
Well, the central point, as I understood it, of my learned friend's submission, was that section two three three can only apply to some, oh, I don't say functions, that's probably not the helpful word, to some manifestations of a local authority, but not others. And my lord, Lord Justice Arnold put to my learned friend, whether it was a question of a local authority acting in public law, which I'm not sure whether, I'm not sure that my learned friend's trouble actually accepted that formulation, or whether he persisted with his own formulation of the authority acting qua authority.
Well, I think he put it both ways. His primary submission, as I understood it, is that your local authority must act qua local authority, and not simply as something that might be done by some, something that's not a local authority, such as acting as landlord. But he didn't, his secondary submission was that if one had to formulate a test as to how you differentiate between those two, he struggled to do better than saying you discriminate between public law functions and private law functions.
My lord, yes. My lord, in my submission, however one seeks to split some authorities' activities from others, is hugely difficult, actually not possible in this way. And appreciate, I'm going to refer to some sections of the act that are before the court. If my lords are interested in the submission, I can furnish them this afternoon. But in the way that the argument has developed, it might be helpful to give an example.
Sorry, which act?
The Housing Act nineteen eighty five.
Right.
Section twenty four of the Housing Act nineteen eighty five entitles local authorities to impose reasonable charges on their tenants. Now, rent setting is, of course, a function that any landlord would undertake, but on the other hand, in the context of local government finance, rent setting is also part of the overall budgeting that takes place annually of the local authority, because it feeds into the overall budget. And there are some very complex of local government finance provisions relating to accounting for local government rents under the housing revenue account, which has to balance, et cetera, et cetera. So the same, one and the same time, in my submission, the authority is performing an ordinary act that any landlord might perform, but is also acting as a local authority as part of its annual budgetary statutory requirement. Now, it doesn't involve serving notices, but in my submission, it illustrates the difficulty of trying to say, is the authority acting as a landlord, is it acting as a local authority? Similarly, if a local authority wishes to vary in terms of its tenancy, of its secure tenancy, section one oh two of the nineteen eighty five act says it can only do so in the manner statutorily described, which by section one oh three involves, does involve serving a notice, a variation. Before it can serve such a notice, it has to serve a preliminary notice informing the tenants of the proposed variations and inviting their comments within a certain time. So it's a, it's a statutory consultation by notice. It then considers those comments and serves a final notice, which is binding without more. So again, we have what would seem to be a public law consultation being carried out in relation to possibly a large number of tenants. And my lord will know that local authorities, very rare exceptions, try to keep all the terms of their tenancies the same, consistent across the entire stock. Now, if a local authority couldn't use section two three three to consult under these provisions on variations of tenancy terms, but had to prove receipt by each individual tenant of that preliminary notice, in my submission, that would be a very surprising outcome. Tenants are entitled, according to section one oh three, to serve notice to quit, for example, on receipt of the preliminary notice if they don't want their terms varied. If they do serve notice to quit, then for the time that they remain in occupation, their terms aren't varied. Though these are not simply notices that have no individual consequences, but they are, at one and the same time, both relating to the landlord and tenant relationship, but also involving public law functions, even in relation to section eighty four A, the absolute ground. Parliament provides in subsection one that the obligation on the court to grant a possession order is subject to any Human Rights Convention defence that might be relevant under the Human Rights Act, which specifically brings in public law issues, and indeed, as familiar cases such as, you know, Wandsworth and Winder, where the rent increase was alleged to be unlawful, and the House of Lords held that that could be raised as a defence to possession proceedings. We are dealing with local authorities that perform hybrid function. Some of them may exist in private law, but at the same time, some of them exist in public law, some of them relate to their functions as landlord and to their functions as local authority. And seeking to try and strip away one from the other, it is, in my submission, an impossible task. My learned friend said that section two three three should be given that interpretation, I think on the basis that when it was passed, Parliament hadn't considered any broader application, such as that for which I contend. But there's no, there's no material to suppose that Parliament was not aware that the breadth of its language would entail, so, that applied to notices that were, as the language suggests, served by or on behalf of a local authority. My respectful submission, on my submission, is not necessary to formulate the sort of difficult test that my learned friend's submission is. I don't want to trade practicalities backwards and forwards, but in my submission, actually, when one talks about practicalities, the difficulty arises on my learned friend's submission, because in each case, the court would have to decide in what context and in what capacity the authority was performing functions, whereas in my submission, it's simply about applying statutory language.
Right.
My lord, the Bromley case, to which my learned friend handed up after lunch, which I've only looked at briefly, but in my submission, it's important to that decision. First of all, that section two three one was being considered in the context of article seven of the, of the general development order, which referred to lodging an application. And it was really a case about whether or not handing in documents when the town hall opened adequately complied with the time limit than it was considering.
Yes.
Anything else?
Seems a bit odd, because I thought there was a provision in the interpretation act that said where time expires on a Sunday, then you can do it, do it the next working day.
Oh, dear.
I mean, maybe I'm misremembering, but, I mean, because the whole point of it, of that case, was that the document had been lodged at the office or dropped at the office on the Sunday, which was within time, whereas the next working day was, when it would have been seen, was out of time. But, I mean, that seems to me to be a classic question of, well, how do you interpret the time period?
Oh, dear. Respectfully, I would adopt that. But, my lord, the relevance of section two three one is really, in my submission...
Sorry, just before you do.
I'm sorry, my lord.
Two nine eight in the Seavers case, the Bromley case.
Oh, yes.
There, Lord Justice Shaw says, in the first full paragraph, section three, two three one offers a choice of giving, apart from sending by post, it could be left at the principal office. This cannot mean simply depositing the documents on the doorstep like lodging them, it must in practical terms involve leaving them with the responsible officer or employee of the authority. Now, you wouldn't accept that, as I understand it?
No, my lord, I would rely on the formulation in Newborough, which I don't think was referred to in this case. But in my submission, subject to any difference between somebody serving a document on a local authority and a local authority serving a document on a person, which I wouldn't seek to advance, in my submission, I would suggest that the Newborough formulation is preferable. My learned friends in their skeleton raised the specter of somebody walking into the town hall and just handing a notice over to any old person who happened to be there. In my respectful submission, that's not really a legitimate concern, but I would accept that placing it in the council's letterbox was leaving it at the property, and I would respectfully admit that that's a preferable view. My lord, in my submission, leaving the documents with the respondent's girlfriend was likewise within the Newborough formulation. I'm not going to repeat the submissions earlier.
Can I just ask you about, just about the effect? In other words, is it an irrebuttable, rebuttable assumption or what? In Newborough.
My lord, yes.
Page ninety three, the specific statutory provision under the agricultural holdings act. Have you got that?
Yes.
So two thirds of the way down. Any notice under that shall be duly given?
Yes.
If it is. So that's expressly stating that it is given if you comply with the balance of that provision. Whereas two three three just sets out what you may do. So there's a slight difference.
Well, my lord, there is a, there is a difference in the language, but to that extent, I accept.
Well, in other words, it could be argued that section ninety two of the nineteen forty eight act itself provides an irrebuttable presumption, but as it says, shall be duly given, or served on, et cetera. Whereas our provision in subsection two just says, this is how you can do it, doesn't actually say what the consequences are if you do it that way.
Well, my lord, I, I see the point.
It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's, there's not a rebuttable presumption, but it's, your case is, I think, that there's an irrebuttable presumption. Is that right?
That's my primary.
Right.
My primary, my primary case, my lord, is that if the document falls within the category of documents that may be served under section two three three.
Don't worry, I've got one, yes.
It may, then the effect of leaving it at its proper address is that service has been affected, or the document has been given.
The, is there any wording into two three three that you says, you submit creates or demonstrates that it creates an irrebuttable presumption? Would you then go to Rushmore?
Well, obviously, I do go to Rushmore.
Yes, okay.
I'm just trying to see whether there was any...
And it just says, I mean, there...
I suppose I would say, as I think I mentioned in my submission this morning, that if one looks, for example, at subsection seven, which I appreciate is a different provision, but it's all part of the same section, the entitlement where you have made a reasonable inquiry to simply leave it on the land must indicate that, in my submission, that Parliament regarded that as... as good service. And if that's right, using the language that has been given in that subsection, the document may be given or served either by putting it in the hands of someone or fixing it to some building or object on the land, it's the same language. But in my submission, it wouldn't make much sense if the local authority serving a document under subsection seven then also had to prove.
We seem to have three strands. One is, you have to prove that it has
Yes.
been received or come to the attention.
Yes.
The second is, it creates a rebuttable presumption. And the third is, it creates an irrebuttable presumption.
My lord, no, as I said that time.
And your primary case is irrebuttable.
Yes.
Then rebuttable.
Yes.
And you reject the first.
I reject the third.
Yes. Right. I went in reverse order. Focusing on your subsection seven, it would be quite serious if that presumption were rebuttable, wouldn't it?
Yes.
I mean, the chances of a document served that way coming to the notice of the person are potentially very small indeed.
Yes. And the chances of, in a situation of, somebody whose name and address is unknown, even after reasonable inquiries, ultimately being tracked down and accepting that it had come to their attention is probably even more remote. There needed to be, in my submission, a manner in which service could be presumed from the acts that were done. And in my submission, that is also the case in relation to subsections one and two. Leaving it at the proper address is the act of service. And that is what Parliament intended. If I'm wrong about that, then my fallback position is that any presumption, there is a presumption, though it may be rebuttable, but I do, as my lord, Lord Justice, might have said, reject my learned friend's argument that there has to be proof of it. Because in my submission, that would make a nonsense of the purpose of Section 233.
If it's rebuttable, then plainly, were we with you on other things, the case would have to go back. Were it irrebuttable, does it go back or not?
Irrebuttable. If it's irrebuttable, then, in my submission, it probably goes back in any event, because there would need to be a ruling on whether or not the requirements of Section 84A were made out.
Sorry, just on service.
Oh, on service.
Would it need to go back for the district judge to arrive at a determination on whether what had been done was such as to satisfy the Newborough test, say?
My lord, in my submission on that point, no, it wouldn't need to go back. Because if my lords reached a conclusion that, on the evidence that your lordships have allowed to be included within the bundle, that your lordships could reach that conclusion for yourself, now that would be a matter for this court as to whether that was something that was we need to do. But in my submission, follow as night, follow day, follow as day. My lord, there's just one further...
And sorry, just a bit, the authorities you gave us this morning, the only authorities you've been able to find on whether service provisions in a statute create irrebuttable or rebuttable presumptions.
I can't, never...
Sorry, I'm not, this is not a trick question. I just want to, because they came very late.
Yes.
They only came this morning.
Yes.
Case has been on its way here for some time. And I just, I just want to be sure that there aren't other things lurking out there.
I...
It's not a very inappropriate way to describe cases, but...
I took the view that the Rushmore case was the most directly relevant. And there were, Lambeth cases referred to in that, but from memory, I didn't think it actually made the same point about the nature of service, but I'm happy to go back and look at it again. There was then a third case I looked at, which was much older, from the 1950s. And again, I didn't recall that it said anything that particularly took matters any further. But I'm certainly willing to go back and reread those two additional cases in the light of my lord's question. Because when one's producing authority, particularly producing late, one doesn't particularly want to produce half a dozen and
No, no.
inconvenience the court and the parties by doing so.
Can I introduce more material, which I'm sure you haven't got here? If you look at CPR 6.3, I mean, I think you'll find other things. You have got a wide book. A claim form may be served by any of the following methods. C, leaving it at a place specified in certain rules. So you've got the same language. You're leaving it at a place. Where you do that, is it open to the defendant to come back and say, "No, no, no, I never received it"? Or if you have satisfied that requirement and left it at a place, is that that?
I don't know. I, I, um... A moment, I'm looking at it.
Wow.
Notes.
It's quite serious, potentially, from the point of view of a claimant up against a limitation period. If they leave their claim form at a place that's designated, but the defendant can come back and say, "Oh, no, it didn't reach for..."
Yes, my lord.
Actually, if I understand 6.9 correctly, in the case of an individual, the place of service is the usual or last known residence. So you achieve service, potentially, by leaving the claim form at the usual or last known residence.
Yes.
Which is very similar to what we have in this case.
Oh, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not being much help on this. The notes don't seem to... Leaving it is...
Yeah, but it's implicit, isn't it, that you affect service by doing the steps, taking the steps that are specified? I mean, if you look at the notes, for example, 6.9.5, and the duty to take reasonable steps to a certain current address, consequences near often. The whole point is that you're just, it's just going to the address.
Yes.
I mean, if you had to go further and prove receipt, then the question of a duty to take reasonable steps wouldn't enter into it.
No, my lord, yes. Well, my lord, it's certainly our case that the doing of the steps in Section 233 constitute the giving of the notice or the serving of the notice. Service at a place would seem, up to my submission, consistent with that. Seems to be consistent with the notes, but...
But it might be said that there's a difference between the concept of service and the concept of notice. So the concept of service is indeed that you are getting a document to a specified personal place, and that that's all that's required. Whereas the concept of notice, it might be said, entails more than that. Do you have any commission to comment on that?
Well, my lord, certainly, as a starting point, Section 233 is excluded from operation in court proceedings. So service and notice, except are, are in that sense separate, subsection nine. But given that the giving of notice can be properly achieved by leaving it at a person's address, given if I'm right, the observations of the Court of Appeal in Newborough, that as long as you deliver a notice in a way that a reasonable person would, intending someone to, in time, who's the recipient of it, to receive, that and Rushmore are both, in my submission, consistent with the proposition that even in the case of notice, it is not necessary for the authority to deliver that notice personally into the hands of the recipient. That's clear from Section 233. If it's an appropriate and prescribed method of service, to leave it at someone's proper address, and there are rules as to what is the proper address, and in subsection seven...
Yeah. So if we're looking for litigious analogies, you would say this is not, there's no requirement of personal service as with committal proceedings, for example.
My lord, yes. My lord, may I just have a moment? Unless there's anything further I can say.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your very interesting and comprehensive submissions. We are going to reserve our judgments. They will be provided to you in draft in the usual way. The now, well, actually, they've always been anyway, the rules apply. So you can only use those judgments to the purposes of telling us what typographical errors we have made. And we would hope that once you've received the judgments, you'll be able to agree a draft order. But if not, we'll deal with any outstanding matters on short written submissions.
My lord, would your lordships be assisted by me providing copies of Section 24, 102, 103, the Housing Act 1985?
Sure, we can find that myself. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.